Okay. Good evening all and welcome to this hot evening to the Housing Neighbourhoods Committee for the first time in person as well. I just pass it over to Ria for the house rules.
Thank you. Good evening. Thank you to those who attended the Housing Neighbourhoods Committee this evening and to those who are watching the meeting via our live YouTube channel. To those who are present this evening, I would like to run through some brief housekeeping rules with you. Please can we ask that you use hand sanitizer when entering and exiting the room this evening? You will find hand sanitizers located within the room should you require to use this during the meeting. We ask that face coverings are worn when moving around the room and are only removed when you are seated or standing to talk on an item. Please also remember to follow social distancing guidelines in place. We're operating a one-way system in the room this evening and you will see signs on the doors to assist you. We're not expecting any test fire drills this evening. If you should hear a fire alarm, please make your way out of the room, down the stairs, where officers will assist you to the evacuation location, which is across the road outside the Star Hotel. Anybody requiring help in the event of evacuation, please make yourself known and the relevant assistance will be provided. Please could I ask that all mobile phones are either switched off or put into silent mode? Members, I will remind you that should you wish to speak, please raise your hand and wait for myself or the chairman to acknowledge you and your name will be added to those wishing to speak. When called to speak, you'll be required to press the button on your microphone in front of you, which will turn red when active. Please can we ask that you speak both loudly and clearly into the microphone so those watching live can hear you. When voting this evening, members, this will be undertaken by a show of hands. Thank you.
Thank you, Ria. Only difference of tonight is that item eight will now be after item four because we have a lady called Judy Dowell on the line, so rather than have her hold, listen all night through, we'll bring her in earlier. So item number one, apologies for absence.
Apologies have been received from councillor Talbot.
Any declarations of interest for tonight's meeting? Minutes of the last meeting held on the 4th of March 2021.
Sorry Chair, we've got a declaration from councillor Martin.
My apologies, sorry.
I'm sorry, it's item, the Community Housing Fund. Just interested, a trustee on one of the community land trusts.
Oh, sorry, I've got to declare as well, thank you. I can declare that I'm a member of three community land trusts within the borough. I'll give an update but I won't be voting on the item. So minutes of the last meeting, starting on pages four of your papers, go through the pages for accuracy please. Pages four, five, six, seven, eight, nine. Councillor Williamson?
Yes, on page nine, where it says the Cambridge Health Authority, it was the Cambridge Public Health Observatory. Not the authority, the observatory, but it's Public Health Observatory.
Can we get that, ma'am?
Thank you.
Thank you. Pages 10 and then pages 11. Sign them off as complete. Okay, moving on to item number four, the forward plan. The one, the forward plan is the one that is in front of you on the piece of paper. If you can talk to that one, please. Any comments on the forward plan? No? Okay then, moving on to item number eight then, which is Paula Boyce and Judy Dowell. Community Champions, Community Food Project.
Thank you Chair. Good evening, members, and I want to just introduce you to the lady on the screen, who's Judy Dowell from the Norfolk Community Foundation. Welcome Judy. Judy's here to answer questions on the appendix to this item eight committee report. But I present to you, members, the next phase of the Community Champions Project, which we described to this committee in March. You'll remember that there's three strands of the Community Champions Project funded by MHCLG. All of the money has to be spent by the 30th of September with projects ongoing after that date, so we can, the projects can continue, but the funding has to be spent and committed by the end of September. So we commissioned the Norfolk Community Foundation to do stakeholder research and a feasibility study with our very active VCSE and community groups that are active in the borough to find out, to assess and look at who could actually take the lead role in establishing two community supermarkets or community-led food stores in the borough. This is linked to a new campaign across Norfolk called Nourishing Norfolk. The premise being that to locate a community food store near an existing community hub or a place where VCSE agencies and providers can give residents low-level support and help and guidance is the right course of action in terms of preventing any issues escalating in a family or a household. We have seen an increase in food poverty during the pandemic. The Norfolk Community Foundation have been grant-funding a lot of VCSEs and we've had a really active food bank network. The food bank network have been engaged in this work and today we're bringing forward the recommendation as set out in the report to work with the Shrublands Youth and Adult Centre for Charitable Trust, known as Shrublands, which would be based at Mesh on the Shrublands Estate, where our community hub will be for the Goldstone and Southern Parishes and Salvation Army Great Yarmouth Corps, who would set up a community shop premises to be identified in Great Yarmouth to look after the Great Yarmouth and Northern Villages food-related issues. Both organisations, subject to members' approval tonight, will be invited to submit a business plan, setting out their ideas for operating costs and the grant would follow based on what we feel is appropriate and value for money in terms of working with community-led organisations. This is quite a radical project. There is only one other in Norfolk, which Judy and the foundation helped set up at the Charles Borough Centre in Thetford. We've taken the business model from that. Judy's worked with my colleague Dean Wilson, who is neighbourhood manager for Mesh, who's here tonight, and Sue Robinson, early help hub manager, to make sure that this aligns well with our locality strategy and that actually the community organisations that we want to wrap around these two community food stores are supportive. I'll probably stop there Chair, and if members of the committee have any specific questions about the foundation's recommendation reports, then I'm sure Judy will help answer those. Thank you.
Judy, did you want to say anything else to the committee?
Just to say it's great opportunity to meet with people, albeit virtually. Delighted. I can hear some people talking about that. I will, any questions?
Any questions or comments from any members? No? Okay, we'll just go straight to the vote then, which is the recommendations on page 52 of your report. Can I have all those in favour? Any against? That's carried. Thank you very much and thank you for coming tonight Judy.
You're very welcome. Thank you. Delighted we can move forward with the project. Thank you.
Best of luck, thank you. Going back to item number five then, which is on page 13 of your report, the Housing Strategy Update, and that's Christine Spooner, please.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry, Councillor.
Chair, could I make a point that I abstained?
My apologies, can we note that, please? Christine, carry on, please.
Okay, thank you. Christine Spooner, Housing Strategy Policy and Performance Officer. Tonight, this report provides an update on the progress of the delivery of the council's housing strategy 2018 to 2023, which was approved in 2018. The housing strategy, as you're aware, has four priorities. New homes, ensuring there are enough good quality new homes. Our homes, improving the quality and use of the council's housing stock. Decent homes, providing a good mix of decent homes across all tenures. And healthy homes, meeting the needs of vulnerable households. The delivery of the housing strategy is via a range of objectives in the Housing Strategy Action Plan and progress is monitored through a series of measures. A progress report was last brought to Housing and Neighbourhoods in March 2019. However, last year, other issues had to take priority. This 2021 update illustrates that despite the challenges of Covid, progress has continued to be made across all four priorities. We recommend that the committee notes the progress to date and request a further report in 12 months. Does anybody have any questions?
No questions or comments? Well, thank you very much. It's just to note that report. Thank you. Moving on to item number six then, Council Adaption Policy. Vicky George, please.
Chair, if I may, I'm going to be introducing this item.
My apologies, fire away.
So, good evening, everyone. So, before you have a copy of an updated council homes adoptions policy, as you're aware, under the Housing Act 1985, the council is required to ensure provision of or adaption of accommodation for its disabled tenants. The adoptions policy for council tenants sets out the council's approach to provision of these adoptions. The existing policy was revised back in 2019 and I'm sure members of those members who were on the committee at that time remember the amendments that were made. But subsequently, the policy's been updated to make a number of changes, which I'll just talk you through at the moment. So, the main changes are that we have amended the policy to ensure there's greater clarity on the decision-making process for refusing adoptions, reflecting some recent case law around when an adaption is refused on the basis of the works being not reasonable or practical to carry out and when those decisions are made by a landlord on the basis of management of its housing stock. And the other change is to change the maximum spend, which is available at the discretion of myself as housing director, to ensure that we can carry out work to meet the needs of our disabled tenants and the household members. You'll be aware that the current policy allows at my discretion to fund adoptions up to the cost of £50,000. The current normal limit is £30,000 where no discretion is required from myself and we would only go above the £30,000 on an exceptional basis. The change we've made in the policy before you today is to reflect some of the complexities of carrying out adoptions to people's properties and recognising that in some cases there are households where there is more than one individual who needs adoptions. And where we have clear recommendations for adoptions for more than one household, we're still limited under the current policy to the maximum limit of £50,000. And that has meant that in one case, that adoptions weren't able to be perceived, although we didn't actually have the formal recommendation for a second individual. So what the change is to do is to allow, is to increase the amount we can spend on a case-by-case basis, reflecting the needs of the individual and based on clear assessments of those needs for adoptions. So that if there are two members of a household who require adoptions, we can spend up to £60,000 and if there are three or more, we can spend up to £80,000. Now, we do fully expect that these will be very rare and exceptional circumstances and the number of instances where this will happen will be few and far between. And the report identifies that since June 2018, we'd only had five cases where when we looked at the cost of the works, the cost exceeded £30,000 and only one of those, the cost would have exceeded £50,000. In making this recommendation, we're very mindful that there is a budget for adoptions as a whole and that the cost of these adoptions is funded from the housing revenue account and that's why the upper limit of £80,000 is being applied. We would, in all cases where we were looking for that discretion to be applied, look at the wider needs of the household and whether actually a move to more appropriate accommodation is the better outcome. And so the other change that has been made is to introduce two new sections, which let our approach to what happens when we acquire a property to be adapted, in terms of when those adoptions are carried out, make efficient use of that stock and ensure needs can be met as soon as possible. But also just be really clear about the requirements of those properties that we acquire using right-to-buy receipts, which are acquired for the basis of providing either an adapted property or a property that can be fully adapted and made to wheelchair standard. So the recommendations are to adopt the amended policy and if there are any questions, please do let me know.
Councillor Williamson?
Yes, I just wanted to ask on this policy, on 11.2 in the actual policy, the applications to exercise the right to buy, have we had any applications in the past five years or so for right to buy? And do we have a policy in which we actually prevent that? Because if we're spending in the region up to £80,000 possibly if there are three people within the household, or 60 if there are two, or 30, whatever it is, large sums of money that could then be basically taken out of the system. I just wonder what the policy was and how many houses we may have sold?
We have had one recent incident within the last 18 months, where someone has applied to buy their property through the right-to-buy where there had been significant adoptions for that property and we did refuse that right-to-buy on that basis, in accordance with the legislation.
Great news. Any, councillor Martin?
Thank you Chair. I just wondered if there was any update on the recruitment of additional officers. I think it was like the technical officer and/or a trusted assessor to try and help reduce the completion time. I remember, apologies, I can't remember which meeting it was, but it was in one of the documents that there was going to be funding for further roles to help reduce and to bring someone in-house to help with that.
Yeah, hello, sorry, Vicky George, Independent Living Service Manager. Your recollection is correct. We committee did approve two-year funding for a technical officer and an OT. We recruited a technical officer in September 2020 and we recruited a housing OT in December 2020, after quite a lot of unsuccessful attempts to recruit. So we were eventually able to recruit someone who has been in the role now for about six months. So we are now looking to work our way through the waiting list that we have. Obviously, that has been impacted by Covid and the fact that we now have to work in a very different way to we were before, but early indications are that both posts are having an impact. And I think if I recall correctly, one of the recommendations in the report was that we would bring a further report back about a year into it, which we'll probably do later this year.
Councillor Wainwright, did you have your hand up earlier?
How many people in accommodation at the moment with a disabled person in the property? How many of those have we got waiting to be moved because their premises can't be adapted to suit their needs?
I'm afraid I'll have to come back with that information, if that's okay? I don't have that at hand.
Okay, thank you.
Councillor Williamson again?
There's question on the similar lines actually. I have a number of people on ward where they have a great need for adoptions, but they may live in housing association housing rather than council housing and I know there's a degree of sort of swapping between them, but how can we facilitate this? Because it's very, very difficult to make contact as a ward councillor with a housing association. They don't tend to reply to councillors, whereas the borough council does obviously reply, but there are some really, really important urgent cases I have for the person in a three-storey house with a disabled son and the bathroom's upstairs at the top and it's almost an effort to wash them downstairs. It's really awful, but they're with a housing association. I just wonder how much work we, how we work with housing associations to have that sort of transfer across premises?
It wouldn't be a direct transfer, so what happens in those circumstances is that the needs of the individual are assessed in accordance with their allocation scheme and appropriate priority is given. So where a property's been deemed not to be able to be adapted to meet the needs of the individual, we provide level four priorities, that's high priority for a transfer. The difficulty we have, which we've talked about before at committee, is finding the right types of properties to meet the needs, especially when there's particular needs. So for example, large families leaving large properties which can be adapted. But even sometimes just finding smaller properties that can be fully wheelchair-adapted can be quite challenging within our existing stock. So we do work very closely, we make sure that we work with the housing association to get the support from them for the move. We will look at what interim adoptions can be done to make residing in a property easier, while a wait for a move can be done. Sometimes that might not be fully possible and then sometimes it's about looking at equipment, which is why having our in-house occupational therapist is so helpful, because they're able to make those, she's able to make those assessments and help us with that process.
May I just do a follow-up, please? Is it possible for a ward councillor, if they have a problem with a housing association, to send that to Housing Options or yourself to actually expediate that? Because sometimes it's getting that communication channel working.
We're happy to try and help support that, of course.
Sorry, I just had a quick one on to that. Whereas the council cannot get DFGs, but private households can, where do housing associations fit in the legislation? Do they have to provide their own funding or do they get access to other parts that we are not allowed to, just out of interest?
Housing associations are able to apply for DFG, so the tenant applies for a DFG. Housing associations have in the past contributed to the cost of adaptations, that isn't so much the case now. So there are some housing associations that will make a nominal payment, but the majority of it is met through DFG grant-funded.
Thank you. Councillor Cannon then, Councillor Smith-Clough.
Thank you Chair. On appendix two, top part of the page regarding parking, it says adoptions can be made for parking areas within the plot boundary. Would that include, if we have any, designated parking areas for first-floor flats or houses within our portfolio? So sometimes we have car parking areas which are numbered for each flat or house, so would it include that area?
Appendix two relates to acquiring a property to provide a property which we're going to be, will be suitable for adoption or already is adapted to meet the needs of someone who's a wheelchair user, so we wouldn't be looking to acquire above-ground properties due to the issues around access. In terms of our existing flattered estates, there are, in a number of areas, there are wheelchair parking spaces, but they're not designated to a particular property.
Right, okay, okay, thank you.
Thanks Chair. It's just with regards to point 10, the tenants installing their own adaptations, just interesting, you know, what number does that entail? And also, you know, what is the cost, if any, of those adaptations that have taken place and then the need for them to be repaired afterwards? And just a final consideration, are they all minor adaptations or are there any major that are given the green light as well? Thank you.
Okay, I'm not aware of any recent adaptations. I can take that away and find out for you and bring that back to the next meeting, if that's okay, yeah.
Okay, any more comments or questions on this item? Okay, so the recommendation is to approve the adaption policy for council tenants. Can I have all those in favour? Any against or abstentions? None? Okay, moving on to item number seven then, the Community Housing Fund, which is Sue Bowlin, please.
Thank you Chair, good evening, members. The report in front of you is an update on the Community Housing Fund. This fund was provided by the Ministry of Housing, Communities and Local Government in 2016/17 and is monitored by Great Yarmouth Borough Council. We also provide an enabling function to support community groups form and develop community housing organisations. The community groups themselves manage their own projects with the technical support from locality who have been commissioned to provide this work. As with other areas, work slowed in the early days of lockdown while everyone became used to the new ways of working. Two of the community groups have been able to continue to meet and progress while the remaining two have paused, with the intention of restarting once lockdown restrictions are fully lifted. We do continue to monitor these two organisations. Great Yarmouth Community Land Trust is active, they've been unsuccessful with two projects so far but are currently looking at a further two in the town and it's expected they will make an application to the fund very soon. Fleg Community Land Trust is also identifying land and working on a lease with the council for a general fund property. An eastern communities hub has been created for the eastern region to help community groups. This is in its early days, but it will be able to provide support with progressive projects and sourcing funding once fully established. Are there any questions?
Questions or comments from members? No? I'll just give a quick update on the ones I'm a member of. The Hopton CLT will likely, more than likely, 99% basically merging with the Low England CLT. It was formed on a premise of a parcel of land which is now gone and Hopton is now landlocked from the A47, the sea and private landowners, so it cannot possibly expand. So we're merging with this Low England CLT. The Low England CLT is also looking at a site at the moment, but is waiting on the land agent to engage with us. And the Fleg CLT has this week provisionally agreed a significant-sized plot in one of the parishes and will be putting in a bid for the plot for an application quite soon, followed by another application for another significant-sized piece of land in another northern parish as well. Councillor Williamson?
How much support do the trusts get from the council? What kind of level of support do they get? Technical support and administrative support?
Depending on each project, we have, Sue Bowlin has been a brilliant help for us. We have... We have through Debbie Wildridge, through...
Yeah, locality.
Locality, that was it.
We commissioned support through locality. They have the technical knowledge and the experience of community organisations across the district. So internally, requests come through myself, and I'll ask perhaps strategic planning or property and assets for assistance where needed.
If I may, just a supplementary, if I may, please. How fast is the response when a request for a loan comes in to our parcel of land or take a project forward? Because often speed is essence in these things.
We haven't had such a request, so I can't give you a timescale, I'm afraid.
I thought there was a request. There has been a request for one.
I'm not aware of any loan requests.
A request for the Priory Centre?
No, the... We didn't have a formal request. No, we didn't have a formal request.
So may I ask then, if I change the question, how fast is the timetable for those requests to be processed? Is it a fortnight, a week?
I couldn't give you an exact timescale at this moment just because we haven't had a request. But obviously, we would be mindful of any constraints and time pressures in relation to the land and the site in question. And it would also, because we would need the loan application, the information to be sufficient for us to actually consider it. So, you know, we would act expediently to give answers as soon as we possibly could. But I'm afraid I couldn't give you a particular timescale at this moment in time.
Okay, any more questions or comments on that item? So the recommendation on that was to just note the report. It's just an update, my apologies. Okay, moving on to item number nine then, which is the annual performance report. Trevor Chaplin, please.
Thank you, Chair. This is, as you say, the annual report on performance for the housing department. A couple of points I've made here. One is that going forward, the asset team is now backed with Great Yarmouth and also future performance. We're expecting to improve in the areas such as voids and repairs because of that. I also would like to point out that in terms of the housing rent collection, it's HN01 on your report. Bearing in mind we've been through a pandemic, the performance in collecting rent has been exceptional. You'll note in the actual appendix that the amount of rent rears has risen by around £1,000 over that period, even despite the pandemic. The other parts are there for you, so if there are any questions, I'm happy to take them.
Councillor Williamson?
Just a query really on HN05. I realise that one time North were collecting these. We're now collecting these ourselves. What methodology are we using?
So the methodology will not change for this financial year because GYN is still providing the repair service, and they use a Survey Monkey survey to collect feedback on repair satisfaction.
So it's still collected via the people who are doing the repairs?
I would have to double-check that because I know that they have been collecting some information at the point when the repair is done. But I will just double-check whether they're doing a follow-up survey later on. I'll just double-check that and we'll come back to you.
The concern was raised over a period of time before you joined us, actually, Nicola, that the people actually collecting the information very often are the people doing the repairs. And to have something which is sort of empirical evidence will need some kind of independence there. I found very often that when I went to look, it was quite a different case than what was reported. So I just, I would like to see that collected independently of North.
Can we raise that, Nicola, with Jane on that side?
Yeah, of course I will.
Thank you.
What I will just say is that when we did the Star survey back in 2019, we also asked the question about satisfaction with repairs. We did notice a slight, a lower satisfaction with repairs because sometimes there is a time lag. So when someone's just had a repair done, they'll rate a higher satisfaction. Whereas when you do a one-off survey with a number of questions, they reflect across the whole experience. So there is, we do do that independent verification of satisfaction with our Star survey, and we'll be looking to do another one in the future. But I will certainly follow up on that point.
I was actually thinking, Chairman, of the digital response whereby the person was given something to feed in so that it fell automatically. So the collation will be done digitally and ready at hand. Thinking of a system like that.
Bring it out with Jane, because I was on the understanding that we would be dealing with it anyway as a clientele function. We should be doing the checking on the complaints. They have their own internal system. But I was on the understanding that we would be doing our own system as a clientele function to keep an eye on what is going on, bearing in mind the issues.
That's what we thought, that's what I thought, Gemma.
Sorry, Councillor Wainwright?
I would agree with that. I think we did discuss this, Andy, at one of the DAs on boards where we weren't satisfied with what North were telling us. We didn't think that their figures were probably 100% correct. So I think we were going to monitor ourselves as well, so.
I'll feedback to committee on that one next time. Any more questions or comments on this item? No? Okay, then. Moving on to item number 10, which is the Council House Programme. Just to remind members, if anyone wishes a comment on the confidential appendix, then we will have to suspend the session and then come back in afterwards. Does anyone wish to say anything on the confidential appendix?
I think, Mr. Chairman, I can make my comment on the number 10, if you could be a bit of leeway, please.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, going straight on to item number 10 then, which is the Council Homes Programme. Claire Wilkins and Nicola Turner, please.
Okay, thank you. So in October 2020, a report was provided to Housing Neighbourhoods Committee detailing work that had been carried out to identify an initial tranche of potential sites that may be utilized to bring forward the delivery of council homes under the new Council Homes Programme. This report provides an update on the work undertaken over the last seven months, including details of changes in staffing to support housing delivery. I'm going to draw your attention to two particular parts of the report. The report seeks approval to draw down its expenditure to develop 18 much-needed, one-bedroom, high-quality new homes at Beach Cove Station for which planning permission has been secured. It's noted in the report that the cost of abnormal development costs for these homes has affected the viability of the site. And the initial cost that we thought the homes would cost has increased as a result of these abnormal costs, but also changes to the design to make sure that we're providing a very high-quality design of both the homes but also the scheme, the wider environment within which the homes are sitting, and also the quality of the build. So what we're looking to do is use the tender process to look at a, how we can get the best value from the development of the homes subject to committee approving the drawdown of the required expenditure by looking at the option of using either a traditional modular or other form of modern method of construction to deliver the homes. But in taking that approach, we will be completely mindful of the fact that we had been looking at a modular of delivery because that gives us speed of delivery. And therefore, what that means is that we get rental income and we're able to house people much earlier than we would with a traditional build. And so the detailed information on the cost of the scheme and the level of expenditure that I'm seeking approval to draw down today is actually detailed in the confidential appendix. The other point I want to bring your attention to is the request to seek approval to draw down expenditure in relation to a conditional offer that the council has made to acquire three homes on the St Nicholas Drive site in Caister. This is a private site for which planning has been secured. And there's a section 106 requirement for three of the 17 homes to be provided as affordable housing. And we've been asked whether we would consider purchasing those properties. We've been offered a number of homes on a number of sites, but this is the first one where we're actually comfortable making an offer because the quality of the construction, the quality of the size and the design of the homes meets our requirements for our new council homes. And so the conditional report sets out the value of that conditional offer because there can be no other subsidy going in that, so we can't use retained right-to-buy receipts or use Homes England money to support the delivery of those homes. It has to pay just based on the rental income that we would get from those homes if we were successful in our bid. The thing that's also interesting about this scheme is it would actually, if we were successful, provide us our first shared ownership home, which we don't actually have any in the stock. And it would be a way for us to start providing new forms of affordable home ownership within our own council housing stock. And again, the details of the offer are set out in the confidential appendix. So as you will have noted from the report, we have made progress in a number of areas in terms of our council home programme. And we're expecting the first homes to be delivered subject to approval today in 2022. And we will be providing further updates, an update at the next committee in terms of infill sites, and then a further update in November in terms of our approach to housing delivery as a whole. If there are any questions, please do let me know.
Councillor Press?
Thank you, Chairman. I've not had the opportunity to see the confidential matter because I couldn't get that on my screen. So if I touch anywhere which is going to be sacrosanct, Chairman, please cut me out straight away. But I hope what I'm going to ask is a general observation, and that's on the cost of the first scheme at the Beach Couch Car Park. You mentioned abnormal costs. Have you taken into account, or will you be taking into account, what is predicted to be the massive increase in the material costs of actually building the place apart from the abnormal cost that you say? Because my information is, from the construction industry, is that prices are rising at a fantastic rate, and budgets that are set today may be completely out of kilter in six months' time.
We are aware of that, and some allowance has been made. And that's why we're keen, if we get approval today, to go out to tender as soon as we possibly can, so that we can secure a price. Without touching on the detail of the confidential appendix, one of the things I have said is that if, when we get the tender prices back, the scheme isn't viable, we wouldn't proceed, and we would come back to committee for guidance and how to proceed. So please be assured that we will be keeping a very close eye on the costs and making sure that this is a completely viable scheme.
Thank you, Chairman.
Okay, any more questions or comments? Councillor Williamson?
Thank you. This may cut across both number 10 and number 11. Just like to raise the issue of when we're looking for these infill plots of land and this very land for the housing needs, I just wonder if we could make sure that we always ask the ward councillors in each ward early on at the beginning of the investigation? Because very often ward councillors have a ground view of what's happening around their ward in a detailed view. No disrespect, sometimes more than the person looking at a map or looking at other holdings. So I'd just ask that, especially after the various DC decisions which happen, which I think could have been avoided if ward councillors had been approached in the initial stages. So I just ask, that's part of the process in future?
Absolutely. So as I mentioned, there's a report coming through to July Housing Neighbourhoods Committee, which sets our approach to infill sites. But also, as you're aware, we will be preparing a development standard. And there's a task and finish group which has yet to be convened, but will be convened very shortly, which will put in place our processes for dealing for, moving forward. But one of the things we always do is when we're looking at an opportunity before anything went anywhere public, we would always engage with the local members and seek views and guidance on that.
Councillor Scaler, and then Trevor.
Yes, I'm thinking that whilst these are social homes, there isn't much of a problem. But should something like right to buy come along in 20 or 30 years' time? I'm just wondering whether the current building society's insistence upon brick-and-tile construction is going to present a problem for people to buy them?
That's a good thing in my view, but I'll pass it over to Nicola for comment on that one.
Now, I'm going to use the wrong term, so I do apologize. If we do go through for a modular build in the end, after we go through the tender process, then the modular we'll be looking at is BOPAS. I'm looking to Claire, Claire's nodding, thank you, so I've got it correct. And that is a more good, more mortgageable product. So obviously, there is much more use of modern methods of construction. Modular is becoming increasingly used as a method of construction. So there's been put in place a process for ensuring that properties are mortgageable, and they have to have a minimum 60-year life to meet that requirement. So yeah, that is something, because also we want to make sure that the homes are robust and would have a long life. Because when we're building council homes, we're not building for 10 years, we're building for 60, 100 years. We want to make sure that our homes are robust and quality and will last that long and meet needs and be appropriate to meet those needs at that time.
I'd also say in the 70s, they got mortgages for steel-framed houses, and now you can't. So I'd urge all tenants not to purchase their properties and leave them with us for people that need them. Sorry, Councillor Wainwright?
Just on the infill sites, obviously, there's a paper coming forward in July. It always appears that infill sites are very contentious, and we've seen that with Crab Lane and the Great Northern Close. And as Councillor Williamson has said, you know, obviously, members do need to be consulted. But could we actually look at, I mean, we do own land that isn't on council estates. We've got Beacon Park, for an example. Now, I know phase one and phase two have been allocated, but we do have the capacity on phase three to perhaps put some of these module builds on there. And I have talked about that on many occasions before, that we should be having a mix on that type of land. It's a big, there's a lot of acres there, and it's always been ignored. But, you know, we have got the opportunity to do it on Beacon Park. We have got the opportunity to do it on phase C. So, you know, could that be looked at? Could something be brought forward? So we can look at the possible costings on that as well, as well as these infill sites that you're going to come up with.
Sorry, just waiting for the siren to go past. Certainly, we can look at other lands, other than land within the housing revenue account, other land owned by the council to provide council homes on. But there is a cost for that. So for example, for Beach Cove Station, the council is acquiring that land to the housing revenue account from the general fund, and there is a cost to purchase that land. And that adds to the cost of those schemes and those homes. Whereas if we're building on housing revenue account land, there's no land value, it's free. Because the council has already bought that land, it already owns it within the housing revenue account. So certainly, we would always look at non-HRA land, but we would just need to look at the overall cost effectiveness of that as well. I wish, I mean, I can't talk about Beacon Park specifically, but I can just say is that, you know, our own HRA land will not be the only ever land that is used to provide affordable homes for the council.
Yes, yes, thanks for that. Yeah, I agree, 100%. But, you know, I just think we should be looking at it. I mean, I know there's a cost, an additional land cost because it's not part of the HRA, and you said that we had it at the Beach Cove Station. So, you know, it's worth considering. It's worth bringing it to members to actually have a look at, to see the viability of it. That's all.
Okay. Any more questions or comments from any members?
Just following up. There was a piece of work done on that particular piece of land back five, six, seven years ago by the finance officers at the time. And it does stack up financially to actually have a mortgage on the buildings. And at the end of 20, 25 years, the buildings are now fully by the Borough Council through that period of time. It's possible to do it. It just takes a longer period of time to actually own the building outright.
Okay. Any more comments or questions? No? Recommendations are on page 71, items one to four. Can I have all those in favour? Any against or abstentions? None? Okay, that is carried. And moving on to item number 11, any other business? I have none. So that's the end of the meeting then. Thank you very much, everybody.